This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, very good.
I'd like to call to order the regular March 20th, 2023 council meeting order at 7:15 PM. All rise and pledge allegiance, if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
Just that Corso is not able to... Did you get it?
I got his message, yeah. So, anyone, anything else? Anyone want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Who moved, Mr. Mayor?
Who moved? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilor Wagner. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
It'll be... Oh, you're right. Under Mayor's report, we need to add "be..."
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, do you want to amend?
Oh, amend my motion to include "be citizen of the month" under the Mayor's report.
Thank you, Councilor Webb. Seconded by Councilor Wagner. Call the roll, please, Stephanie.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. We were to have a presentation tonight by Khorsoh Haravi. And he came and met with Josette and I about two weeks ago. And very interesting gentleman, call him the Soil Man. And we met with him for at least a half an hour, had a nice visit with him. And he's... Josette, do you want to give a little information on what he's doing?
Sure, so...
Save the Soil.
Sure, so with a group called Save Soil, which their primary mission is to encourage people to enact policies or lawmakers such as the council and the county to enact policies that would enhance keeping the topsoil we have. So, that could be asking people to do cover crops, asking people to not do nitrogen fertilizer, things like that. Just that basically, we're in a crisis and we could lose another 40% of topsoil by 2045. And so, it's kind of a earthwide movement of different people trying to do this topsoil-saving solutions. So, he had requested that the mayor do a Save Soil proclamation tonight because March 21st is the worldwide Save Soil kind of movement date. It's... And so, that's what he's got before the council tonight.
He's been a resident of Columbia County for thirty, over 30 years. I think he's a resident from Iran. And he has taken upon him, and he does all volunteer work. And because he lives in Columbia County, he's approached Mayor of St. Helens, Mayor of Scapus, myself, and I think Jerry from Rainier Mayor with proclamation, and they all agreed to it. So, I think it's going to be proclaimed tomorrow.
Yeah.
Today was the first day of spring, but...
Yeah, tomorrow's their anniversary of...
Anniversary.
The movement starting...
So, on behalf of Corso, I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas, "Save Soil is a global movement launched by Sadhguru, united world leaders, visionaries, influencers, and citizens of all nations behind a common purpose to restore and safeguard the world's soil. And whereas, Save Soil aims to address the global soil crisis, recognizing that 52% of the world's agricultural soils are already degraded. And by 2050, 90% of the earth's soil could be degraded. And whereas, addressing soil degradation issues would bring solutions for the loss of biodiversity, nutritional deficiencies, food security, water scarcity, climate change, and mass migration. Whereas, the proposed solution to advocate for policies across all nations towards soil restoration and aim to increase organic content in agricultural soil to a minimum of 3% to 6%. And whereas, in an effort to raise awareness and activate support from leaders and citizens alike, Sadhguru was on a 30,000-kilometer journey on a lone motorcycle, covering 27 nations over 100 days since March 21st, 2022, a year ago. Whereas, this movement is supported by 81 nations globally, now therefore, I, Rick Hobart, Mayor of the city of Vernonia, do hereby proclaim March 21st as Save Soil Day. In the city of Vernonia, as soil is vital to all life and urge all citizens to be a part of the Save Soil movement to support national policies towards soil restoration and aim to raise the organic content of soil to a minimum of 3% to 6%. Be it further proclaimed that I urge all citizens to participate in creating bright futures for our children and the future of our planet." So, it's my honor to find out this evening. Thank you, Josette. He felt really bad not being able to attend. He got his schedule confused. He's right at the president in Scapus City Hall, helping the mayor proclaim Soil Day. So, assured me that he'd like to come visit again to thank us, so...
It's... I got confused by the guru. Who's the guru that rides the motorcycle?
Well, I think it's another volunteer over in Europe, I believe.
Sure. Sadhguru is a global leader, visionary, and a two-time New York Times bestselling author. He is named as one of India's 50 most influential people, whose work has touched the lives of millions worldwide. He has launched several initiatives over the years, powerful examples of bringing together all segments of society to achieve systems change with lasting, sustainable solutions for ecological and social issues. These initiatives have garnered the support of governments, public figures, grassroots organizations, and millions of people.
So, his name is? Maybe I misheard.
Together.
It wasn't guru, but it was his name.
Yes.
Because it's a guru!
Right, that is his name.
I think Rick said that the guy that he spoke with who lives here in Columbia County is the Soil Hoover.
Oh, Rick.
Yeah.
Yeah, you said that when you were just talking about...
He actually owned the Shorty Sporting Good in Clask and I for over 20 years.
Oh, that's where it is.
Sporties.
Sporties, I'm sorry. Close.
You can look him up. He's... I don't normally do this. But because you brought it up, there's a lot of information. I think it's probably worthy doing some investigations to who he is.
I feel like I'm personally a good student with my two horses, and I utilize the manure. I put it right back in the ground. So, that's basically what Khorsoh is interested in. So, he gave me a thumbs up. Neat guy. Okay, I'll move right into "Be" of the Mayor's report. It was my duty this month to select a citizen of the month of March. And I chose the Vernonia Postal Workers. And I think it all started with me as far as when my wife started order on Amazon several years ago. And I developed quite a relationship with my local post-delivery man, Bob Zavala, over the last couple of years. And I watched him go above and beyond his duties rather than just putting a ticket in the mailbox saying that a package is too big. He'll bring it up to my doorstep, and I'll get to have a nice chat with him and thank him. But... And Chuck Lucely, and I'll mention eight of the postal workers now. Sally Horner, Mitchell Musin, Jeffrey P. Worthing, Jean Saltworthing, Jaden Largent, and Postmaster Thomas Chung. They've always been very detail-oriented and friendly, and their job is a difficult one, believe me, trying to get the bail to citizens in the area. It's not an easy job, so I want to recognize them and say big thank you to them. Are there any people from the post office here tonight? I don't see any, unfortunately, but I have eight certificates. Maybe Scott, I could meet you at the post office maybe tomorrow, and we can pass these out, if you're able to.
She'll give me a text.
Okay, will do. So, anyway, thank you, Vernonia Postal Workers. Okay, any council committee meeting reports? I have one. I attended the senior board meeting last week. Not a whole lot going on. They have really... Charlie runs a really good meeting. We're out of there about half an hour. But, of course, the income from the thrift stores has been down due to probably weather, not as many people getting out during the winter months, but they look forward to that increasing. See if there's anything else. There's quite a bit of activity in the Scout Cabin now with events there, and so that's helping out a little bit. They did thank us for putting in a longer nail in the gutter nail, which seemed to take... They seemed to take care of the problem, so that's been resolved when we get a daily use of rain. So, that was a good thing. Still some talk about the backdrop in the kitchen behind the stove and...
Yeah.
Not too much. Other than that, it was a pretty good meeting, and that's all I have to report on that one. We did not have a cemetery meeting, did not have a quorum last week, so we were not able to meet. So, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I know that when the senior center and food pantry was built, that there was a rule that you were not allowed to open it up to community events after a certain number of years.
Until.
Where are you in that timeline?
We're halfway.
Halfway, okay.
We have two and a half years to go.
Waiting for that community, you know, to help support you guys, you know?
Under 60.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any topics on the floor, Stephanie?
Are there no other committee reports?
No, I don't think so.
I have one. For the Parks Committee regarding discussion of ordinance 914, requesting to table the topic.
I'm not sure if it was going to be grouped with the agenda item.
Yeah, so you could...
Most of us here are for the Parks Committee.
So...
So, you can...
This is a participant for the audience?
Yeah, so they can either participate now, or if you guys agree, then they can discuss it during the topic that's on the agenda.
Oh.
If you get through your approvals for your minutes, then...
Okay.
Next one up anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Council wishes to wait for that? Okay.
I think that's solid.
Thank you, Norman.
Okay, moving on. Set agenda for acceptance, library board meeting minutes for January 2023. Also, Parks Committee meeting minutes for January 23. Library and Parks. Any questions or discussions for those two meeting minutes? If done, would anyone like to make a motion to accept those two meeting minutes?
I move.
Go ahead.
I'll move to accept the library board meeting minutes for January 2023 and the Parks Committee meeting minutes for January 2023.
Thank you, so moved. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Councilor Wagner.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for March 6, 2023.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda for approval.
I'll move. Is there a second?
Hold second.
Thank you, Councilor Webb. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving right in, unfinished business, staff report, designated smoking area cost to implement.
Okay, so I brought you guys the details of this. Previous meeting requested to get an estimate of what it would cost to implement the designated smoking areas as outlined in ordinance 914. So, I basically showed you what the different costs were. So, it comes to about $1,600 per designated smoking area. And then I attached pictures of the benches, the disposal. Ground one is what we're hoping to do because the hut huts, which is what we have here in front of City Hall, those regularly get opened and dumped out all around, and people pull cigarette butts out of there. So, we want one that has a locking mechanism or is attached to something with a little bit more structure. The signage that's presented was what was presented originally with the ordinance, but I had talked to Kim and Councilor Ash about, should you guys put money for these in the budget, then I would go back to Parks Committee and make sure it has the right emblem and talk to them about signage placement ideas they have and how we could implement that. And I did mention at the bottom of my staff report that, as Councilor Ash mentioned, prior council meeting, that they do intend, Parks Committee does intend on bringing their first red line to the April meeting after their meeting this Wednesday. So, maybe we don't discuss the ordinance in detail until we see what their red line proposal is and put it on the agenda for the first meeting of April.
You want to go ahead with Kim with your report?
Yeah, I just, I think we're never necessarily prepared to speak. It may require, but I'm going to just start off. I do want to introduce the Parks Committee. Jason is our chair. I'm just here because I don't have a voice. William Hertz. Suzanne Boprou is the coordinator from tobacco cessation and health education, coordinator from Columbia County Health, and has been working with us. Here, we have no chance, sweetheart. We have a couple members that couldn't come tonight. One was, had a conflict with hers, and the other one is sharing the same significant science, so they're with me. I'll try to get out of your referring, especially in the... I don't know that we have any particular order either. Just happened to be the first one. So, I wanted to address the implementation of smoking ordinance. We heard about kind of the discussion you had at the last meeting. We were surprised because we didn't expect it to be coming up as an issue because we were actually trying to clean up the old ordinance. So, let me just read what I wrote. Last fall, several members of the Parks Committee raised concerns about smoking in parks and in the playgrounds. They were concerned not only about the impact on children, but the impact on adults who have asthma, compromised respiratory symptoms, allergies, litter, fire risks, et cetera. The committee unanimously, which was a little bit of a surprise to me because I had no idea we had a unanimous group on this, but the committee unanimously agreed to gather more information about smoking in parks and standard practice throughout our county and the state. We consulted with Suzanne Boprou, let's say that one, Columbia County Public Health. She gave our committee a presentation which included new research about the impact of second-hand smoke and how particles travel in the air. We then learned from Josette that Vernonia had actually passed a smoking ordinance back in November 6 of 2017, almost six years ago. And most of us, I think all of us in that committee, had no idea that Vernonia had taken that action because we've never seen any signs, right? So, even though the smoking ordinance had passed council almost six years ago, it was never implemented, and as a committee, we were surprised and actually a little alarmed by that. When we reviewed the ordinance, we recognized that it needed to be cleaned up and updated. The one thing, it didn't have some of the parks in there, there's some changes. The wording was a little confusing in parts. Some of the, there's been some changes to standard practice, et cetera. And so, we asked Suzanne to come back to the March 22nd meeting with a new copy where she's been able to kind of work it through and resolve the confusion, but keep the same intent of the original policy. So, there's no changing in the intent of the policy. We had hoped to approve that version and send it on to council in April. However, we also felt that it was critical that the city implement the policy in the near future, and so we identified signage in the ordinance as one of our budget priorities because we needed to do that last month, right? Wanted to make sure it got in there in our budget. If there was a lack of funds for a sign in the current fiscal year, the Parks Committee unanimously agreed that it should be funded in the next fiscal year and the ordinance implemented. I understand that our liaison, our committee liaison, Councilor Ash, explained this to the committee, to the council at the last meeting. As vice chair of the Parks Committee, I'd like, as the person who chaired the last meeting, which is part of the reason I'm here, I'd like to ask the council to postpone the discussion on the smoking ordinance until the Parks Committee can review the proposed updates consistent with the intent of the ordinance 914. We expect to have this updated version for your review in mid-April for council to try to review it, and at this time, we'll be acting without full information. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Hi, everyone. Nice to meet you. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I just have some comments and some implications and reasons why it's so important to continue to focus on smoke and tobacco-free policies for our smaller public spaces. So, we know that tobacco remains the main cause for preventable death and disease in the United States, including Oregon. An estuage of this community, advocacy work for tobacco-free policies in our parks and urban spaces is an easy step to promoting and continuing to support community health and well-being. I'd like to go over both health and environmental impacts of tobacco-free policies and second-hand smoke. So, some of the health impacts include exposure to second-hand smoke is linked to health problems, including health disease, cancer, asthma, and other respiratory problems. Children exposed to second-hand smoke face increased risk of asthma, sudden infant death syndrome, acute respiratory infections, and ear problems. In addition to preventing second-hand smoke exposure, outdoor tobacco-free laws help smokers who are trying to quit by eliminating the sight and smell of tobacco smoke. And just to give you a little context for the county, countywide, we have around 53,000 people, total county population. About 10,100 of those identify as regular cigarette smokers. In the last year, we have data that shows that 5,400 of those people have tried to quit smoking. So, that's over half of that population have tried to quit smoking. Also, as with all tobacco-free policies, these measures send a message to children and youth that tobacco is not an acceptable behavior or a norm in the community. Tobacco-free policies encourage young people to make healthy decisions. The more tobacco-free environment the community provides, the fewer opportunities there are for youth to start smoking. Some of the environmental impacts. Discarded cigarette butts are non-biodegradable, and they take decades to break down. Cigarette and other tobacco product litter is unattractive, expensive to clean up, and is environmentally harmful to waterways and wildlife. This waste can also affect the health of humans when, for example, children pick up and consume used cigarette butts, and when the chemicals produced from wet cigarette butts enter storm drains, groundwater, recreational bodies of water, and other environments. Discarded cigarettes are also a significant cause of outdoor fires, accounting for hundreds and millions of dollars in annual costs in environmental damage, property loss, firefighter expenses, and restorative efforts. And just to give you another context, in 2011, 1 in 10 Oregon fires were caused by cigarette. Cigarette, that's not being disposed of. Outdoor tobacco use policies can help reduce the amount of tobacco waste as well as maintenance and cleanup costs. To give you an idea and context of some regulations that exist within the state regionally and in other cities in the county, the only statewide indoor policies that are passed are called the Indoor Clean Air Act, and it prohibits smoking in workplaces and within 10 feet of all entrances, exits, accessibility ramps that lead to and from entrances and exits, windows that open, and air intake vents. Statewide, in terms of like the Parks policies statewide, smoking is not allowed in any of the state parks except for in personal vehicles, personal camping units, campsites, and portions of certain day-use areas. So, the majority of all the state parks do have a tobacco and smoke-free policy. I should say smoke-free policy, it's not fully tobacco-free. In terms of other counties in our region, both Tillamook and Clask County have a smoke and tobacco-free county properties policy. Tillamook also has a tobacco and smoke-free fairground policy, and in Tillamook, four out of the seven cities have smoke-free parks, similar to the ones that we have here. So, even within our county, three out of the five most populous cities have gone completely tobacco and smoke-free with their parks policies. Vernonia has an ordinance that states that some parks are smoke-free with others having designated smoking ordinance. Now, there's always a little concern about enforcement, so I'd just like to speak to that for just a minute, but we know that most outdoor policies are self-enforcing, which means they really depend on the cooperation of the public and for those who go to the park on a regular basis and are enjoying that space. Since most people will refrain from smoking if they know tobacco-free policies are in place, the best way to enhance enforcement is to educate the public and local businesses about the policy early and often when you're implementing it. Greater community compliance will be achieved if the policy is easy to understand, the boundaries and areas covered under the policy are clearly identified, and action steps are taken to communicate its impact on all affected groups. I just also would like to make a note about the ADA. So, in terms of the American Disabilities Act, you know, it's discrimination against disabled people to not offer them public accommodations. So, as with any employment provisions of the ADA, non-smokers who have a documented sensitivity to tobacco smoke, like if someone has COPD or some other, you know, acute respiratory issue, tobacco smoke, they are protected from exposure to environmental tobacco smoke in public accommodations. So, virtually all businesses which serve the public... So virtually all businesses which serve the public are considered public accommodations, including hotels, motels, restaurants, bars, retail stores, public transit, and recreation facilities. Individuals covered by ADA are entitled to full and equal enjoyment of public accommodations. And to people at the highest risk for adverse health effects from secondhand smoke, smoking in public spaces can pose a physical barrier to accessing and utilizing those spaces. Tobacco and smoke-free policies ensure a safe, ensure safe access and clean parks to the whole community. Parks are places where people go to recreate, they go to relax, they go to get healthy, they contribute to the health of our children and community adults. And a healthy park system attracts residents and visitors to the area, not just local community members. Parks are a tangible reflection of the quality of life in a community. And so that being said, I'm here as a representative of Columbia County Public Health to continue to support Vernonia in making the parks safe and available for all community members.
What was your name?
Suzanne Boprou.
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 Thank you, Suzanne.
Yes, thank you.
We just basically want a fair opportunity to go ahead and look into this further and get some proper information. We feel that, you know, coming at this next month would give everybody the opportunity to go through, to research, come up with information, establish a clear communication with you guys about what we want to do, what revisions we want to make, and how we go about getting this done together. So we're just hoping that you give us, give us the opportunity to go ahead and move forward with doing that and hopefully just tailing this until next month. And looking at this seriously and working together and making sure that we're just not being pushed aside. We want to be given that full opportunity to give all the information, get you guys all the information. So I feel like there's a, I mean, first, on a personal note, you know, I got kids in the community, you know, both young, both love the parks. For me, it's, it's only fair that if an ordinance is going to be in place, that it be enforced, whether that be signage or designated smoking areas, otherwise what's the point? So I have two young children that play in parks and I prefer them not to be around smoking and running around. And I have a daughter who's disabled mentally, and she does not understand, have to walk up to somebody when they're smoking, you have to remind her of that kind of stuff. So she'll walk right into a group of people or play around with a group of people that are smoking and not even have any idea and be oblivious to it. So it doesn't afford her the opportunity to be safe. So I really do think that this needs to be taken seriously. I think all the information needs to be taken seriously. And that's pretty much what I have to say on that.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Hi. My name is Carol Capone, resident of Vernonia and a member of the Parks Committee. I just want to say that I'm surprised that there was an ordinance already in place there back in 2017, and it was never implemented with signage or anything effective. But I just want to make note that I hope that it can be done so that our parks can be made safe for everyone. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
I'm Janas Sweeto, and I'm just really glad I can be involved with this group and that we, we were really surprised about, we didn't realize about the ordinance and that it kind of got followed up. And this is personally a real important issue for me, so I, I'm just glad to have everybody working on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So potentially, by the time the ordinance gets here, if we're going to put in benches and stuff, I'd like council to direct staff if they're interested in having that money put into the fiscal year budget document so that we can plan for that. And we could always like put in the ones that are listed here, but put in a little bit more than that in case the ordinance changes and there's more parks with total restriction areas, but a designated area. Because currently, we have two in the ordinance, two designated smoking areas. But potentially with the changes you guys might approve, there may be more than that. So maybe go for four, and if we don't use it, we don't use it, but we have it if we need to use it.
We'd have to have, excuse me, go ahead. We'd have to have signage in all parks. I mean, we don't, we don't have signage now.
Well, we have signage at Hawkins.
Hawkins, yeah. For the pool.
This area is, yeah, for the pool. And that was one area that would have a designated smoking area. And that's the flip side too, about going back to parks and kind of talking about, because we want it to be not so many signs that they become obsolete and people aren't looking at any of them, but maybe specifically placed ones, you know, maybe upon entrance or by the areas we want people to avoid smoking around or what, something that you can get too many signs and you can put signs in the wrong place. So that's why I'd be going back to Parks Committee to kind of discuss that and then bring to council kind of a fleshed-out plan.
And I think that we actually don't expect you guys to try to implement the signage until we get the revised policy to you. So we kind of kind of clean up version, because there is some confusion with the language and stuff.
There's certain things that say, say, err.
You're going to bring that back in, in a revised 9, 914?
That, what we, what Suzanne is doing is she's, she's looking at the ordinance, trying to clean it up, make sure the words are correct for what we're designating. And we also need to make sure all the parks are included, which right now, all the parks are included in the law. And then, so we'll do that and then see what I'm going to do.
So back to, we're always trying to go. Do we have a cost estimate? As the current, current ordinance stands, which is the two designated park areas, which are 1,600 apiece. But then these other signs, and I don't, and a question for legal counsel, because I mean, I know the post passed for, to post for trespassing, it has to be a certain set distance. I don't know if, yeah, force an ordinance in a park, if somebody walks in from the linear trail and there's nothing back there.
Yeah, I'd have to, I don't know that either.
I don't know what the legal description of posting for something like this would be, maybe a county health lady.
Linear parks aren't supposed to be smoking either.
I'm just trying to, ballpark, we would be talking, you know, a chunk of change.
Yeah.
Kind of hard for us to project that.
Right.
Into the budget.
Depending on how many signs you needed.
Do we think 10 grand is going to cover it?
Yeah, I think, especially if you're buying multiples, because the $30 to $40 charge goes down if you buy multiples. And then that was kind of off of one site I purchased them on, Champion and Banks might give us even a better deal if we bought multiples, because that's easy for them to replicate. Yeah, I think, I think 10's high. Because I think you can get it done, what we want to get done for, you know, five or six, depending, depending on if there's an extra one, then, and we can always, you know, we'll be going through budget as we, I mean, you guys in April will be hearing their version. So we'll still have May in budget if we came back and said, oh, we need to up the, the smoking implementation because we found councils just approved this.
Yeah, and we can actually amend again in June.
Yeah, before you adopt, yeah. But if it's something you're interested in, I want to get kind of the base number in there so it has a spot for all of us to see it budget.
I would like to see it put in. I know that the committee is unanimous on it, and it's whether or not the ordinance gets updated, we already have an ordinance that has not been implemented. And so if, as Josette said, staff comes up with an amount and pads it a little extra and, you know, down the road, we need additional, you can cross that bridge then, but anything at this point is better than nothing, and in six years, they've seen nothing. So I would say they would like to see something.
My personal, you know, this is me, but my personal feeling is that the signage itself is probably the most critical part of the whole thing. Even to be on, I'm sorry, they all.
No, I'm hard of hearing any of that.
The, you know, I mean, the sanctions are important, but we, we can simplify it as probably, we just need to make sure that people are aware that there are areas that you're not allowed to smoke in, in certain parks, or in all the parks, there's some areas that you're not allowed to smoke in, right? And nobody has a clue on this.
Yeah.
You know, they don't realize it's even part of the, you know, the expectations. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Counsel, wish to make a motion to?
I would like to move that we include budget workup by staff and the Parks Committee in the parks budget for the next fiscal year.
Yeah, so move, is there a second?
Signage?
What?
For smoking signage?
Well, or just implementation of?
Yeah, implementation of ordinance 914 to include signage, disposal areas, and benches.
Can I just suggest that it be as 914 is brought forward in April, not as it stands now? That you amend your?
Sure.
We would be, we would be putting funds in off of this because the budget's being written now, and then you guys can always.
If you up it, just let the budget go.
I understand that, but I just want to make sure when you're referencing that it's going to, that it, that if we are making the recommendation today based on 914, that it's not 914 as written and in, and in place today, but as it will be in place.
But they don't know that yet, and they need to put a number in the budget now. That's why they're talking about, Josette mentioned, putting in some extra, just to be cautious.
Yeah, so if it's 1,600 per, that's 3,200. So if you put in four, if council directed staff to put in $4,000 in the parks budget for this implementation, then during budget, we'll up it. If you guys change it, I may not.
I just don't want us to be locked into a existing ordinance.
We're not. We're putting this money in there to be spent on whatever the smoking is. That wouldn't be available till July 1st, but we can't put funds, I say we, Angie, can't put funds in the budget, not even knowing, you guys might not adopt an amended ordinance. We can only go off what exists today.
Yeah.
Which is, is, does, that actually probably is going to be the more expensive option. Because what if they come forward with no smoking period, then we have to pay for all those benches, it's just signs.
Right.
So that likely is the most expensive option.
Right.
And, and this may progress as, as time goes by. Right now, that's not our intent, however, it's, we're calling it the same one. But there are several parks that were not even listed in the ordinance. Spencer was not in there, I don't think anyone was in there.
It's in there as airport.
Oh, okay.
And Spencer's in there. Spencer's in there, but not the skate, whole skate park, which people see as a different park, but it's all Spencer. But yeah.
It's probably skate park sign, it's all signage.
It has it on the sign, though, that you, that you can't smoke there, on the skate park rules.
So is there a second to the motion made?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counsel Webb. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counsel Wagner?
Aye.
Ms. Hobart?
Aye.
Counsel Norman?
Aye.
Counsel Ash?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. New business, Parks Committee recommendation, usage fee increase fiscal year 2023, 2024. Everyone get a handout? Park fees?
Yeah.
So they're wanting an increase in daily usage fees? A little bit.
We're wanting it, well, so as I've been bringing to you guys, there's been a number of kind of one-off, unexpected expenses in parks being fully mature danger trees. We had Maple Crest up at Orem-Bolmeyer for a $5,000 hit to take out 170-foot tree. So that's, as the forests around us mature, that's going to be a more regular thing. The parks fee has not changed for the utility customer since it was implemented. Did it change from $1 to $2 at some point? But it's been $2 for at least 15 years. Or, thanks God. Yeah. So every dollar brings in approximately $12,000 per year, because you have 1,000, roughly 1,000 utility customers times the 12 months. So as it doesn't regularly come up, staff's thinking a $2 increase would be good, you could do a dollar increase, but then I fear in order for parks to stay not a fund that gets transfers from the general fund, a few years from now, you're going to be upping it yet again. So you could rip off the Band-Aid in one fell swoop for a few years, or you could just do a one, propose a $1 increase into the budget, and then that might stay as for a little bit, but ultimately, we're probably, just because we have so many great parks to maintain, to fight vandalism, to maintain, all of it costs.
To buy signage for them.
All costs money.
So question, will the $1, would the $1 increase be sufficient for the next few years to cover, unless something really dramatic and surprising comes up, like 10 170-foot trees that need to be?
It's outside.
Right. But a dollar would be?
That will bring in 12,000 more dollars. So their bud, it'll bring about 10% of what the parks budget was, because their budget was about 120 this year in income and expense. But with these hits and the kind of mowing and the extra stuff, we're finding there's salaries and one-offs are more than just the regular supplies and electricity. And so that's not changing astronomically, but the amount of man-hours to maintain the parks and then these danger trees and vandalism is costing a lot of money.
It also may give us some, excuse me, may give us some flexibility with the, the wagon wheel campground, the lake, and, you know, the cranks and stuff. I mean, there's, I mean, a little additional money in the pot, like.
Yeah, if we had to do match or something, but that typically would come out of facilities or reserves to be skin in the game.
And the other thing we talked about was annual fees for non, non-residents.
Yeah, so I gave council the master fee schedule page for parks fees. As you can see right now, our residents pay $24 a year on their water bill. A senior pays $25, and then the out-of-town, non-senior pays $35. So whatever you change for the residents, then that would affect out-of-town rates as well. You wouldn't want the out-of-town person to get access to the parks for less than the citizen paying the utility bill. That might not go well, so. And then I, I think it also said raising, consider raising the fees for camping. So a year and a half ago, we did kind of a survey of what other, and we're still pretty competitive. So we have a little concern about raising those fees at this time in this round, just because we want to stay competitive in full. And then maybe when we open a new campground, maybe then that's the right time to kind of say, hey, Anne, we have this new lake campground, and we're going to up the fee a little bit. But at this time, staff would like to keep the overnight fee the same.
And, and actually, as a committee, we just kind of. And, and actually, as a committee, we just kind of, we basically said, we didn't want it to throw us off in terms of.
Yeah, what was coming in, yeah.
We just need it to lower.
Yeah.
How many annual parking passes are sold approximately?
Oh, which you would, I have no idea.
No, I'm, I, I should see this prior to today.
Well, no, I, I could have, well, it's going to be, it's different, it's going to be different than Suzie's number because Cassandra sells a lot at the counter. I can get you guys that number, but I don't, we don't have it real.
And plus for the, like, say, example, thirty-five dollars, you can, at least for Angie, we got, they got two stickers.
Right.
Yeah.
Or if they wanted a third one, there would be five dollars more. I didn't say that.
That's everyone.
We can share with everybody.
Yeah, that's.
That's everyone, though.
Yeah, you, your water bill, you get, you can get two.
Right. No, and I understand that, but if you're a non-resident.
Well, you guys could always ask staff to make it one pass for that amount. And then we just change the master fee schedule and that becomes the rule. But currently, the rule is two passes for that price in the master fee schedule. If you want it different, then just tell us to make it different.
Well, and a lot of them want two cars.
Right.
And we've said.
Some people, but a lot of the state parks, you get one pass and you need to put on something and move it car to car. We could totally do that. It's not the current policy.
Those aren't stickers, though. Those are nice hanging things when you're.
I mean, what if you just raise the annual fee, like, if you, if you raise, if you say it's thirty-five bucks, you raise it to forty, that takes care of that, I should buy a box for the second pass. You see what I'm saying? You could do something like that for non-resident.
I, I think we should look at resident and then non-resident is a result of that.
Counselor Norman had something.
I just gotta be a little prankster. I should get a refund then. I'm paying forty-eight dollars a year.
Yeah. Oh, multiple add, I was like, what? Multiple addresses.
I got two water meters.
Passes out to whoever.
Is there anything in the rules selling your parking pass?
No, I don't think so.
That's on the record now. Good stuff, Dale.
I don't know.
So has Parks made any proposals to?
No.
Right.
Other than the recommendations, they're, okay.
Because I, I, I would hesitate to increase the utility bill too much personally. I think one dollar now, one dollar in several years. I am not kicking the can down the road. I'm just trying to be a little bit more circumspect about this is what the need is right now. And if the need is, is there in three, four, five years, do it again.
I think the need will be there in less than three years. We do one dollar, and that's fine. I mean, I'm just being honest. Because of the amount of costs, I think we're, we, we get in the same amount of money, right? When, even if we're maxed out, we only have a certain amount of income. So I think you'll be there in short of three years, which is fine. Can redo it three years from now, again, for another dollar. I'm not saying that to make you try and do two dollars. I'm just, when you said several years, I was like, mm, that's, it's not going to be several years before we need one.
It's a fungible number.
Usually more than five.
Few is two to four, five is several. I, I would like to see us increase the parking pass, the annual non-resident to forty, and then ten per additional. I mean, if that's really a case where people are getting two. And I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand exactly what a non-resident annual pass is if they aren't living here. Unless maybe, are they living at the campgrounds?
No, there's, 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 there's nine thousand people that live in Vernonia, but don't live in the city limits. Those people have to pay a parking pass.
But you want to walk the lake a couple of times a week. Are you going to pay a five dollar day pass every time you go, or you just buy the annual?
That's what I mean by non-resident. It's not city limit resident.
They're not coming from out of state to.
So that makes more sense to me.
Yeah.
That we're.
They're not paying a water bill.
I still, I think that it's not necessarily inappropriate to increase that to forty either. And there, if you're doing that, that's going to be another five dollars per.
Right.
However, many, hopefully thousands you sell.
I, I think one of the discussions that we had as a committee, we didn't give a pretty good figure, but we know that we have looked at trying to raise our income coming in before. But at that time, when we proposed trying to change the master fee schedule, that wasn't good timing from the state, from the council. But what we have noticed this year from the reports we've been able to get, that, that the, we, our income that's coming in is great, right? But our expenses and the unpredictable expenses, the ones having to do with the vandalism and, and all that stuff, has really, has really been a lot higher. So it's, it's, it's really kind of digging into our income in, in terms of being able to have the money that we want to be able to improve our parks. So that's, I think, why we were trying to, we don't really have an opinion, or I don't think as a committee, we didn't discuss an opinion about what the raise should be. But we, we felt like we needed to maybe take advantage of this time to try to get a little bit of money and actually do some improvement. Not just try to clean up the vandalism.
And the thing about, the thing about the two dollars, you know, I agree with you, Jose, in the sense that when we say several years, I'm not thinking this can be quite far too. With the cost of everything going up, gas is fluctuating, one minute it's three dollars down, next minute it's five dollars down. So the cost of everything keeps going up drastically. But when gas comes down, the prices of products don't come down for some reason. And so, you know, with that being said, the two dollars would just get it done and over with. It would give us that little security blanket, that little cushion you would need for the increasing inflation that's obviously going to happen. And I do believe that over the next, the next two years, it's going to be very noticeable. And this is, I like to turn, rip the Band-Aid off right now. I don't think anybody, in my opinion, would really have much of that concern over being two dollars.
Sure.
So my question to that, and I, I agree, and I do think the revenue is hurting and we need to address it. But my question is, if we, if we double the monthly and residents are paying forty-eight, then does that make a non-resident permit like fifty-five or sixty dollars? Because that seems like a much harder sell than a thirty-five dollar annual pass. So I wonder, do we risk by doing it all at once, hurting that revenue? And having residents pay more? I don't know. Just raising it.
Sorry, Bill. So in answer to your Band, or the response to the Band-Aid issue, I don't know about anybody else around here. My tax evaluation of my home went up over a hundred thousand. Don't ask, it, it isn't worth that, and I can guarantee it. But that bill has, it was a significant increase. And I, I am just concerned that the residents are going to to really bulk it that, that an additional, I mean, it's, it's not that much, but it is a lot for some people. And I, and I understand we've got the seniors who have a discounted card and all that, but, and that would maybe affect, be able to offset that because it's not the two dollars a month. Or do we? Are we able to do that?
What?
The seniors pay what everyone pays. That senior rate you're seeing is for non-resident.
But that's for non-residents, so they only pay, oh, that's silly.
They pay a dollar more than the resident.
I, I think we need to.
We're trying to get seniors on a fixed income out there and.
Yeah, I agree, but I think, I think the, I, I agree that if. Sharice is right, Counselor, Ash is right, that if we're increasing it to forty-eight dollars, that's a lot more than an annual pass holder thing. So, yeah, we need to just, we or you, whoever is going to be responsible for making those recommendations, needs to take that into account.
Counselor Webb? Been, and Suzie probably knows more than I do on this, but being down at the lake quite a bit and interacting with people down at the lake, specifically probably more the fishermen, you know, I've talked to them about the five dollar fee. And, and also the ones that know about the pass, they think it's a deal. You don't go anywhere else to, and, and go into a park.
Yeah.
With amenities for five bucks. Not that I'm proposing to switch to five, but they, they like the annual, you know, a lot of them go, oh, that pays because I, I come out here ten times a year, you know? So, which they might change their mind and buy the daily fee if it's, if it's sixty dollars for a non.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's going to have to be their decision. They might, they might just do the daily fee then, but right now, they're definitely buying the annual pass.
Do you tell people about the annual pass if they're going to be able to bring it up?
Yeah, usually I don't do much, but.
And I don't say, oh, well, you can say more.
They, they ask me sometimes. They ask me.
Oh, they do? Okay.
Yeah. Or they, they say, I've heard that there's, you can pay for a pass, and I go, yeah, you need to go talk to Suzie.
I, I think it's a mistake if we're hiding that from them, because that's just going to piss some, excuse me, that's going to upset someone. And that's going to be bad for us, not press necessarily, really. But word of mouth is the worst thing you can ever do is upset somebody with nickel and diming them like that. And in my opinion.
Well, I don't think anyone's hiding it.
If they ask me, I'm honest with them.
Yeah, but there's not a sign that says like, get your annual pass or anything.
Well, yeah, but I mean, and I presume.
Only know if I tag a car because that's when it says it.
So we don't have a sign up that says five hours a day or?
We do. We don't have an annual pass because the park host isn't required to be there twenty-four hours a day. And if City Hall is closed, those are the two places they could get the pass.
Yeah, I just, I just, that, that kind of concerned me.
But if they went on the website or called City Hall, we would say, right, that it would be readily available to them if they just searched it out a little bit.
It's not being misled. It's just not being highly advertised.
And, and I do, I can, I have a question for you, Suzie. Permission to ask?
Yeah.
Thank you. So the five dollars, for me, it's easy. Five dollars, it's a five dollar bill. Pretty much sure I can scarf one up in my car or my purse somewhere. I would just be concerned, are there a lot of people who play with, pay with credit card versus cash? Because five dollars just throw in there is easy rather than seven. Because that's going to result in probably tons of quarters and nickels and dimes that they had to scrape out the bottom of wherever.
So how late, I think it's eight now. It's eight dollars a day now. And that is actually, I, I think it's seven or eight, but I know it's not any less. And I do know that it has forced people, because I do a lot of work with people out, out there too, has actually forced people to use card more often than cash because it is not a number. And so if your machines that take cards, it actually didn't change the amount of people that were coming due to the fee increase, due to the convenience that they can pay with card. Because a lot of residents out there are thinking about how much it gets trashed these days by birthday parties and such like that. They see that the money's going to, and I had to speak on some city council, some council stuff down there about the lake a while back. And so what they were seeing is that so long as they see people in the park doing work, cleaning up, doing things, nobody really paid that much, I don't care, but so long as they saw, and it's the fishermen, I talked to Bill, he knows I'm down there a lot, but people, I thought a lot of people come up from Gresham and such that fish up here. They actually think five dollars is cheap. They're like, we can't go to any parks for five bucks. And they see the fact that it's cleaned up all the time. It's nice looking. It's taken care of. If you were to increase that for any reason, I don't think it would get a, a bad eye at it.
Oh, no, I don't disagree with, with that. I'm, I'm looking at.
Right.
Definitely, you know, I have no problem with that. I just want to make sure it's not going to cost the city too much because of the excess change in number of people using credit cards. Because I don't know how much we're charged per card. And then in addition to that, I mean, it's just.
I'd have to look into all that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
The machine breaks down credit card use versus cash either.
No.
Because I know it doesn't break.
It, I think it does on the receipt.
I know it doesn't break down camping versus parking.
No, it doesn't, because it isn't that kind of system. But yeah, it does break it down on the receipt when the cat, when they get the cash.
Actually under, well, under five percent. So if you're raising it even a dollar, there is no way that the pro, increase of processing would negate the actual income.
But you, oftentimes, there's a minimum fee.
I'd have to look into that, but I don't think it's, I don't.
That's how I've done it at my, all my nonprofits, we use Square. It's ten cents plus.
As nonprofits?
Two point seven five percent. That's just any, any.
Because we never were able to get that good of a deal, and I do for nonprofits.
Counselor Webb? Yeah, you know, we've been a long time for a raise. I mean, that two dollars has been there for, well, like we're saying, probably at least fifteen years.
It used to be a dollar when we moved here.
Yeah, but it was instituted over like twenty years ago.
Yeah, and, but I know that there was a lot of uproar over increasing it to two.
Oh, yeah, there's always.
Well, and that's the thing, when I just.
We don't run on thanks, Susan, you know? You know, the city doesn't run on thanks.
And I discussed this with the Parks Committee, that either we need to bring in more revenue via fees or get comfortable that they can't be maintained in the way we want them to be. So those are things that we have to decide.
And people will complain about either of those.
Right.
Finished yet, so.
Sorry.
Mr. McNair's quote, done yet?
Yeah.
Going through life serval budgets in parks, I mean, we're always trying to put some money into the reserves. We're always scraping the barrel, trying to get it in there, knowing that we're just turning around and spending it on maintenance items. It's not a good position to be in. Yeah, these trees are eating our lunch. It's nature, trees maturing out, getting old, happening. If we're not careful, we have to take care of them especially. I think we got a pretty good crew in there right now. It's kind of got an eye on them, and hopefully we can be a little more preemptive. But you can't catch them all. Yeah, I'm thinking the two dollars is, you know, give us maybe just a little breathing room. Hopefully, we can get the wagon wheel campground in. That was my vision to bring in some more revenue, hopefully not a lot of extra work, labor down there so we can maybe bring in some part-time summer help. Because onion grows a lot of grass in its parks in the summer, and it's an overwhelming job. And, you know, the lake, just, you know, and we're seeing it with the docks and, you know, those pumps aren't going to last forever without maintenance costs. I mean, we're.
Right.
We got it four years.
Four years in the.
On that pump station.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a comment right now, too, about the tree crew we've used in the past, as specifically lady lately. Unfortunately, Maples, Maple Crest will know, is no longer in business right now due to ill health. And he gave us.
Quite a deal.
Of pro bono work. He saved us thousands of dollars. And because he won't be working for us anymore, we're going to have to go to a different contractor, and it's going to be probably twice as much. So, just something to think about.
Did you have your hand up?
Nope.
Okay. Saw something up a quarter mile. So I think another, another thing to consider is the benefit, you know, kind of the cost analysis of number of people who are buying daily parking passes versus putting it on the citizens. And I understand that's an easy twelve thousand dollars. I get that. But if we're increasing, I don't know how many people buy parking passes, even an approximate number. Do you have a?
No, and so if you guys, I can easily, we could table this, bring it back. I could look into the pay station, what the credit card. No, and so if you guys, I can easily, we could table this, bring it back. I could look into the pay station, what the credit card fees are. What, how much is coming in via credit card? Because that could be a number you could bump up in lieu of bumping. Right? I'll look at how many annual passes are we selling? Can you guys back more information to make this decision?
I would love.
Your next meeting?
Yeah, I would love to see that.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Because I think we need to look at. The monthly fee for residents, the daily parking and the annual parking and the senior parking. So that's.
Yeah. Yep. Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you for your patience and tolerance of so many questions.
I'm concerned on that. I know my dog was not about to be boat wrapped. It was 34 out of 34, but. Concerned when summer comes and they, we get a lot of voters that want to come in. And they paid it just like that last year when that guy paid $5 and he couldn't even get his boat down because it's like a crop off.
Yeah. So. I don't know what 34 out of 34. Oh, where it is on the priority list. Okay, I'm like.
Yeah.
It's 34 out of 34. Um, no, we've been talking about what, short of really redoing it, we can. To, uh. Fix it so it's accessible. That's our plan for this summer with that and the docks. Is, is limp them along till we can get funding to really do what we need to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to the.
Want to table it?
Yeah.
You have to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we table, um, making a decision on the Parks Committee recommendation to. Update the parks fee schedule until we have additional info from staff.
Councilor Ash made that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconding by Councilor Wagner. Would you call roll, please, Stephanie?
Can we have a quick discussion? Are they planning on bringing us any kind of recommendations?
No, this is their recommend.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay.
They're not putting a fee to it. They wanted to see what could be increased and still remain competitive. That includes annual day use in the passes.
So they're asking us to come up with numbers? Is that the, okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Letting me clarify that.
Mary Gobert.
Hi.
Councilor Lorman, did you have something?
He did.
Yeah. Are we going to have another update to the annual fee? That this might affect? Master, do we have a master plan that we're going to change this year that maybe this could go at the same time?
Yeah, so typically we change in July, right? You change ahead of the new budget for water fees, for all of that, right? Those all kind of get redone and that comes before you guys look at again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll all be together. You're just being.
They're trying not to.
Decision on how to direct us to move forward.
Yeah.
And then have to do it again.
No, and this will just be what's going into the budget and preparation and then. All the changes to the fees will happen before Jan, July 1, so that. The July to June 30 of 2023, 24, has the new fees for whatever, water, whatever you guys change.
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Councilor Ash.
Aye.
Councilor Webb.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. East Africa review of. CVA between, only please.
So this is from me. So this proposed document that you see here, and I think I might have put it. Oh, yeah, okay. So the underlined is new or changed. This is the same table of contents page. Not all of this is changed. It's just that. The union rep had put it at the end of the document. I had to put it back at the beginning, so it looks like it's now, but same difference. A lot of it was just, um, changing and outlining working days. To be very clear that it's actual working days and not business days or anything of the sort. They, so if we start on page 26. They did want, on section 2.2, they did want 48 hours notice of an interview. Should it be held? They didn't like the 24. They thought that was too little time notice, which we didn't have a problem with. They changed a lot of the he, she, because in contracts now it's just they instead of he slash she everywhere, is him slash her everywhere. Because that's what you really mean. And then investigatory, sorry, that word was not rolling out of my mouth. Interviews, they wanted the 24 hours notice because it hadn't been in there. That's really, and then working documents. We did add some clarification on page 27, section, article four, step three of the arbitration. Because this is kind of the issue that arose from the arbitration we just went through. That we want them to send us notice of the meeting. That they held to vote to go into arbitration. That's what this step is talking about, that when. The police union votes to go to arbitration for one of their members. We wanted to change clear, clarify the language a little bit. That it's 20 working days. From the date of the administrator's response in step two. So step two would be like, I denied a grievance. Right? And they want to go to arbitration. They have to do that within a certain amount of time now. Before, it was a long time. It was not listed in here as a time. So both parties kind of got far away from each other before they actually called for it. So we're just, and they were fine with that change. The problem.
I didn't know.
Your face was.
I didn't tilt my head, so it's not necessarily a problem. I did have a question.
Okay. On?
Working days, the definition of working days.
Yeah.
Because it referred, it's, it's referred to in here multiple times. Is that working days of any one particular person? My, my concern of working days over calendar days is. What if something happens, then somebody's on vacation? They're not working or they're sick and they're not working, so that can extend it. They break their leg, they're off for three months.
Yeah, I don't think that's the association, the working days or the actual days, the association is not a person, right?
Okay.
So it's not based on one employee's working schedule. It's based on working days as the association sees them.
But then in step two, if the city administrator shall respond within 15 working days. Again.
That's 15 days. Saturdays and Sundays count because police work all the time.
I would have just used the term calendar days then, but that's not.
That was their choice. And so I'm, I don't want to kick this back to the union to switch it to calendar. They, I, and maybe it's what they use everywhere. I don't know. That was their proposed change to clarify, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. So we did a little strengthening of that, just so everyone's clear, they had no issue with that. All of these changes were kind of approved by both parties. And then when, on the next kind of bigger change, other than the little things, was on personnel records. And. Sometimes people that are interviewing police officers for the next job want to come and review their file. They wanted 48 hours, uh, notice, notify the employee. Then 48 hours of the request so that they're prepared that someone's coming to look at their file, not just surprised by that. And then the rest of it's pretty simple. We took out on page 30, oh, let me see. On page 32, we added. This was kind of a weird thing that we found out was happening and really needs to happen with the approval of the chief or a designated. If it's personal equipment, some police officers really like to use their own gun. Their own gun needs to be certified and have all these things checked out on it. So we wanted it to make sure that personal equipment not issued by the city must be identified and approved prior to use on duty. And then we would document in-house that they're using their own personal equipment and it isn't ours. And so really, that's really the only thing that they sometimes want to use their own firearm. Um, and then on page 33, we took out the healthcare benefits committee. It was in the 2018 version and the one before it, and never really instituted by either party. So they were like, we've never made this, so let's just get rid of it. Um, and I think it was when the county kind of went to a Cadillac plan at the time. And the union wanted the city to get to a Cadillac plan, but we couldn't. So we just kind of let the healthcare, the healthcare benefits committee, that was the idea. That it would fight for getting the Cadillac plan, but we can't really because we have all the other employees. Um, and then we did put in the section about someone that opts out. They had an amount they wanted in there, but we really have to follow the insurance company's benefit rules. There's a cap that we can give someone. Being in the pool we're in for opting out because you really don't, the insurance company doesn't want anyone to opt out. They want us to pay for everyone, so they have a maximum amount you can allow an employee to have. So we just didn't put an amount in there so that it always follows whatever their requested amount is. Instead of a number and then having to come back and amend it. On page 34, we did add in Juneteenth, because that is a new federal holiday. And on page 35, we tweaked it here because it's been tweaked everywhere else. The 280 is actual pay periods where the 260 was a, a one-off. It didn't really equate to pay periods through the year, so. Um, we took out compensatory ti, con, compens. Yeah, thank you. I don't know what is going on today. Um, because they are not, anyone in the union isn't allowed comp time. They're either straight paid overtime, they're not an exempt employee, that would be a higher up. And so they don't get comp time, they, they get paid overtime. We don't. We don't let them accrue comp time. Um, so that was just to clean up.
Are you going to change that title then? Because it's not going to be vacation slash compensatory?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I'll tweak that. So it'll just say vacation time payoff. And then. The only thing, so then page 38. This was their language they wanted in, that the overtime and how it's offered, that was their request. So that it's first offered based on seniority that cannot be filled by members. From the bargaining, it be, may, may be offered to non-bargaining members. But our supervisors, if need be. Are going to take it first if they have to play the schedule, right? I mean, if the schedule is that they're trying to. If it's a one-off, if it's a regular occurrence, then they're going to do it by seniority within the union.
Can you, can you just clarify? Because my brain is not. Certain what this means, to the nearest half hour. So that, my question is, that, that concerned me because it would never go down.
It would never go down.
It would always.
Rounds up.
To the minute.
Yeah. So if it's 4:45, it's 5 o'clock.
Yeah, if it's 4:32, it's 5 o'clock.
Yes.
Okay. Is that going to cause them?
No, they, they, this is all agreed upon.
Okay.
They, they want, they put in here.
Yeah, if it were me, I wouldn't want it to read that way, but they did it, so okay.
Um, so that, that's their. Their add-ins on that section. And then employees placed on call will be provided to take home car on page 39. That is the only time we allow take home cars other than the supervisor. Um, and that was kind of a sticking point with them. And we were fine with it. And that the, and also that there's the call out or standby compensation. The overtime rate for a minimum of three hours when they're called out, which that's pretty standard for most police departments. Their one addition is they're on for page 40. And they had wanted, uh, in different incentives based on percentage. So they wanted like a 2% for this. Two more percent for this, which was very concerning to the city as an entity because. We could instantly price ourselves out of even having a police officer. If they came in with everything, they're making way more than someone and the. The quality of that wasn't going to really. Work for us, nor did we feel it was kind of fair depending on who's coming in with what. So they switched it to longevity pay, which we didn't really have a problem with. Because if someone really is our employee for eight years, they probably. In addition to whatever they get in, you know, their step increase, they probably do deserve that. So we, the city side was fine with that. And then there's just the primary, we kind of clarified down here that the additional 5% for resident pay. Would be that it's the officer's primary residence, so that they couldn't have like a condo here, get 5% more, but really be living in. Yeah, banks or something. And then we just added the words 84 on the DPSST standards. And then the fee schedules are the new ones and you can see what the old ones were. Those were agreed upon before this. That was part of the initial stall. Um, and so currently the officers are being paid on this fee schedule. Because when we kind of were at a standstill for negotiating. The union brought up that fact that that's not really fair to the current officers. So, and we had already pretty much agreed on this step, uh, increase. They presented documentation that. You know, showing us comparable police departments and what their rates were, and it wasn't too far off of, you know, it was just a teeny bump comparatively, so. This is the current, uh, pay schedule being used. And then, yeah, we just changed some names and dates and then deleted the whole table of contents, which Leo had put at the end. And Legos reviewed it, so. Yeah.
The residing in the fire, Vernonia Fire District can be a little. Not very good because the Vernonia Fire District going out towards Mist is Scapus Vernonia Junction.
Right. You mean it's out past Pittsburgh?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if they lived at Baguetti. They would be outside the district and not.
Right. Because the, the claim about the resident clause was that they could get to the duty station in under 15 minutes. Right? That, that was part, in that discussion of what I remember at the time. But yeah, if they did live at Baguetti, they would be outside of, not considered a resident.
That's in the other ones, almost, almost the county line, so. That's a longer ways than Scapus Vernonia or Baguetti.
Right. I think it was because the fire district is the Vernonia. Now.
Yes.
About the whole of Vernon, because Baguetti is also a Vernonia address. But you could change it to 97064 or I don't, I don't know what you'd change it to. If you wanted. I don't know how much further out that goes than the fire district, if any.
It goes 97064 goes almost to the mist.
So that's even further, yeah. But I don't know what you guys think about it. We could propose the change if you guys want to do something. Well, and then the other one, uh, the risk of changing that is we may have something. A resolution or ordinance based on the, the 5%, now that I'm thinking about it.
For what?
Uh, the 5% resident fee. In. Yes. I think there's a resolution when we adopted that we would do that now. We would offer that. So. I'd have to, well, I'd have to look because I'm, in my brain, I'm remembering some council act. I'd have to, well, I'd have to look, because I'm, in my brain, I'm remembering some council action on it. And if there is, then it may say why that is what it is, but I have to go look on the.
Yes.
Yeah.
Nine seven zero six four goes almost all the way to highway twenty-six of Timber.
Right. But I don't know what, what it references in that action, so that'd be, we'd have to potentially change this and that if we were going to change it.
You couldn't live at the DASs or right in that area, because it's a different zip code.
Not, no, DASs is nine seven oh six four.
I'm giving you a general area in that stretch.
Okay.
Before you get to Baguetti, on the right, from Pittsburgh to there, is not nine seven zero six four.
Really? Because that's what their mail gets delivered as.
Yeah.
So I guess my only concern about, and I, and I think I'm with you, is if we're asking to be a resident of Vernonia. And we're stretching it all the way to the fire district.
Well, the, the housing availability for someone to buy a house in the city limits is also an issue. So I think that's why initially it was the fire district.
Right.
And this enables them to have some sense of privacy.
And that was true too.
Whereas living out Kezey, you're less likely to have somebody come in and relate to your door versus when you're older.
Yeah.
No, and, and I understand that. Uh, that's why I, I'm, I don't have an objection to it being the fire district. And I think, I, I don't know, I'd like to see the, I'd like to hear somebody else's opinion on nine seven zero six four.
No, Larry O'Black has a four two nine number.
Well, yeah.
So I don't know if that makes a difference at all.
I don't know. I think, I don't know. I'd have to, I have concern about changing it only because
Yeah.
if we go, then we're, then we're going to have to meet again. Only bummer.
That checks for paperwork.
Maybe next round.
It can be, yeah.
I live in Castle Larry and I had a fourteen.
Yeah, I think telephone's different though. I think the code has certain-
Might be, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm just saying, I don't know that those always correlate like we're thinking, it's what I'm thinking.
There's a Miss Burkitt Field Fire Station at the Avery Junction too, so.
Right, which is just there.
I go to the Avery Junction, I don't know.
Yeah, but that's Miss Burkitt Field Fire District there.
Right.
But the nine, nine six oh four goes clear to where Linda used to live at Mist.
Oh, okay.
On with the nine seven zero six four.
Linda was passed from you and I by not very far.
Right.
Right, which is a mile before Mist.
Right.
And I was two miles from you. And Linda was a mile down the road from me, so.
I guess the question is, do you want them to take longer to respond? And get the five percent?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if they're okay with this, I don't know why we're having an issue with this.
Yeah, it's, they can make it in fifteen minutes from there.
Is that like?
I think it's just.
I mean, I, I-
He's eleven minutes, so I know what it takes to drive to Vernonia.
Yeah, I mean, it's eight miles pretty much from Baguetti to here.
Yeah.
So going regular speeds, that should, you should get there with them pretty easy.
See an issue, I think we should just leave it.
I'm good.
Okay.
Any other?
Any other questions or things that?
Just kind of a typo.
Sure. No, because this is just the draft until we both sign it, so tell me.
Well, just fun, not really a typo, it's just kind of a-
What page?
Used to be, um, taken out, page twenty-six, number six. It conducted when they are on duty and it has, it is.
Oh, yeah.
They get it. There, they get it.
Got it, found it.
Now the pink one.
Yeah, there's another pink one.
Oh, yeah, what I, I noticed after I highlighted it, that is actually a strikeout on the one, I thought it was two hundred and ten hours.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, no, the other one's fine, I see.
Okay.
The strikeout did it oddly, it took out, it didn't reset the number.
Yeah.
It just deleted the one.
Any other?
Oh.
It's just weird.
Any other corrections? Twenty-seven. And that, looks like, almost looked like a two forty when I was looking at it, and I was like.
Took the one out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I think, yeah, it was ten and track changes is so weird.
Yeah. Anyone like to make a motion to authorize the city administrator assignment?
Someone with the couple of corrections that we identified in typos.
Okay, motion been made to accept the corrections. I'll second it.
Second.
I'll second it. And second by Councilman Webb, would you call the roll please, Stephanie?
Councilman Webb?
Aye.
Ms. Marash?
Aye.
Councilman Wagner?
Aye.
Councilman Norman?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Person Carey.
Okay, C Staff Report, Fish Hawk Cycle Re, twenty twenty-three vendor agreement.
Okay. So, uh, Jeff is here, we're getting ready to re-up for the new summer season. Um, this is very similar, if not everything, except the dates and things are changed in here, there's not anything changed, this is the same version you've seen before. Um, but I'm bringing it to you again in draft form. And then we had proposed and talked about the gravel area near the trailhead at the corner of Adams and Maple. When we looked into getting electrical there, West Oregon told us we would need a new pole in the gravel parking lot. We'd need a meter base hooked to that, and the six months that Jeff isn't there, someone would have to be paying the base fee. So we were like, wow, I don't really want infrastructure in the floodplain additional that can't be removed. And we really didn't want a new pole in the gravel, because that seemed weird. Um, and the cost Jeff would be putting in the bill for that was kind of cost prohibitive for six month, uh, usual stint. So we started looking around and we realized that the kind of second driveway into Shea Park, which doesn't really have the designated use that the gravel parking lot has as a trailhead, we know in the summertime that's going to be very full. That might have caused its own issue, and Shea Park really doesn't have any designated activities, other than jamboree. It doesn't have regular things that happen there. Um, and so we're proposing that he be cited where the rectangle shows. There is a meter funny on a pole that is not on, that no one's paying for right there. Which I believe is the jamboree one that we wanted to mimic, which they told us you couldn't do that. And if that doesn't work, there is electrical on the stanchion kind of behind the island of trees there. So we can always plug into that if we need to.
Definitely rather a lot of electrical access, it was surprising, it's like set up to be a mini campground.
Got a lot of electrical there, so, um, and then we could always, if, should Jeff plug into that, then we would just do the increase of the, you know, bill the month he's there, except for the light on the flagpole. Because that's the only electrical that we're using year round now.
If I may, um, so the, I, first off, I'd like to apologize, I really just want to settle in. This is my second year with location difficulties and you guys have been extremely accommodating, so I apologize for that. We were a little off guard by perhaps somebody new at the electric company. So the relocation application, uh, being revised from the Banks Vernonia Parking Lot to Shea Park, for me is six and one half, another dozen of the other, the location is nearly ideal, it's better in some ways, works in others, doesn't make any difference. It does still resolve all the previous difficulties, the previous difficulties that I had with the wonderful lake location. Which worked, um, I just needed a greater visibility, this attends to that. I also did notice, I had some concerns that I didn't interrupt the scenic appearance of the vintage logging train. What I believe is a little disturbing, the, the small jail cell. These are your town attractions, so then I did notice that Shea Park does appear to be almost two separate lots. So the lot that is closer to the building, um, has gravel access. The rectangle, uh, provided by Josette, um, I would like to use as a suggestion. Initially, I was thinking further towards the front of the lot to allow some amount of visibility from Anderson Park. As it turns out, that's not really going to be viable. You're not really going to be able to see my location from the Anderson Park, I'm sorry, Banks Vernonia Parking Lot. So that, it's a sandwich board, that's an easy resolution, and in fact, in order to maintain the visual aesthetic of your park, uh, I would propose maybe even pushing me back a little bit further or into an L shape. Um, to reduce that clutter, uh, with, we, we both found out about this like, what, five days ago, I believe. So I walked site a couple of times and for your consideration, I actually may wish to be all the way back towards the creek. And I am actually happy to pay a, a flat rate off the pre-existing boxes. And that gets me, uh, away from the children's play area for that residence. That allows the full view of the Shea Park train exhibit. And gives, uh, the gravel inlet, um, the ability for us to be able to use that for customer traffic, rather than me just being parked on it. I'm putting them in, into the grounds, but in any case, I'm happy to abide by council's resolution. And I see no difficulties with that site whatsoever. They won't have me here next year going, but I want to move again.
Scott?
Jamboree weekend.
So jamboree typically, they've only had in that grass area the distillery. Um, so that would be something to talk to them about, because that really, that gravel area doesn't have anything in it.
Yeah, and that was another consideration to why, um, and again, that was just the initial.
Yeah, this is just our-
I am happy to push back. I think I still have good main road visibility, I have good secondary road visibility, the parking lot, I can sandwich for it, so there's my visibility for that. I'm right downtown, I'm pleased, I don't want to step on any toast.
Yeah.
I know jamboree is very important, um, I can push back and I don't even care if I get completely blocked off for jamboree. It's not going to be a good business day for me anyway.
Right.
Yeah, all the food vendors are there, I'm not sure, the food vendors don't tap into some of that electric?
Um, no, so that's what they do, is they do a drop service. And, and the thing West Oregon was saying is, they don't consider him temporary. They consider jamboree, which they do the drop service for, temporary, he is not considered temporary after a month's usage or whatever, so.
I'm just bringing it up.
No, and I, we-
Five days ago made the decision to change somewhere.
Well, and this area really doesn't have anything, and kind of what made me feel a little bit better about it is that homeowner got very upset during jamboree, because people weren't delineating her yard from where to be.
Yeah.
So if we, the, if we did have something, you know, that delineates kind of, and I think hindsight's twenty twenty, we would put some sort of barricade or something to help her not have that same issue this year. But the grass area there, adjacent to it, is where they had the distillery taster, and then that's about it. They did, they do, potentially would block him from getting out, but he's not planning on driving in and out every day, so to speak, so.
I have absolutely no problems being blockaded in.
Yeah.
Or jamboree, even visually, it's not a primary business day for me, everybody's busy walking downtown.
Right.
So I'm going to be there meeting, I actually get to go to the jamboree for the first time.
There you go.
So.
You might actually do some business there.
Yeah, it's probably got to be muscly and drive one out.
Yeah, but if he's way back in the back, if he does do the L shape, then he's not taking up somewhere that they historically have anything, but. That is something, we'll, we'll negotiate that carefully with jamboree and kind of give them a heads up and working with them however we have to.
And you can go ahead now. So the electrical is a pole with a meter?
Well, there is a pole with a meter that's not turning, right there.
I don't know if West Oregon is going to go, but they're going to want a base charge?
If they, if they try to pull the hay, you're going to have to pay for the six months, then Jeff will hook up to the current electric that's back there.
So.
Extension cord, because it isn't a lot of pull he needs anyway, he needs a plug-in.
Right.
It's not a-
Can.
Yeah.
In fact, the metered pole does appear to be a two twenty.
Yeah, it does appear to be the kind they hook the jump boxes in, so it's probably not fashioned for him right now anyway. And if he wanted it, if he wanted one ten added, he would have to just pay that.
So if he took and choose the other, the one ten outlet.
Yeah.
That's hot back there now.
And I'm more-
So how, how are we, how's the payment on that?
He would just pay the difference between what we know that electrical charges all year round for the flagpole light and what his pole is.
I, I, I have a concern, there's other people using that resource at times.
Well, and we did discuss that, we did talk about just putting locking boxes on the front of them.
Okay.
Yeah, so that we aren't, so it isn't someone charging their phone or do, you know.
Or their scooter.
Oh, okay, or their, I don't know about that. Oh, now I know, yeah, now I know what we're saying.
It's amazing how people find these resources.
Yeah. It's like in the-
Here's to me that you've almost done your due diligence and, I, I think it's great. Yeah, I don't have any objection. Another discussion on this.
I think if he pushes it to the back like he says, will be beneficial for him. And not interrupting a bunch of stuff, and I would almost think the homeowner might complain because that trailer's sitting there on the property line, got to look at it all the time.
Yeah, the going back a little bit gives Phil a yard and-
Yeah, well, they, they have just recently, since my last visit here last week, set up a children's trampoline, pretty much adjacent to our initial thoughts of where we remember the trailer. And while they would not hurt themselves on their trailer, if anything, it would provide an additional safety barrier. It reaffirmed my, my thoughts, and perhaps I should bring it back in L shape. The L shape also works for me for security purposes and motion detection cameras and everything, so.
Yeah.
Um, oh, and, oh, Councilor Person Wagner, it's good to meet you, I haven't seen you last year.
I saw you actually, I was here as an audience member.
Okay, anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move. To, um, allow to direct the city administrator to enter into the contract. The Chalk East Hikory, please.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Taken by Councilman Norman, would you call the roll please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Hiltzer Norman?
Aye.
Hi.
Councilman Wach?
Aye.
Councilman Wagner?
Aye.
Person Carey.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Good luck to you. This is it, man.
Yeah, well, I mean,
Right.
to, uh, celebrate for a moment, uh, despite my condition for relocation and the two months of, uh, business at Vernonia Lake, um, despite the difficulty, I became profitable within thirty days. For a small startup business, I was quite pleased by that. Now, by profitable, I was still making less than minimum wage, but I was profitable. With this new location and visibility, um, I'm, I'm quite looking forward to it. But one of the interesting things I noted, um, particularly in October, my last month, is about seventy, seventy-five percent of my customers were actually coming up from Portland. about 70, 75% of my customers were actually coming up from Portland to ride the Banks-Fernonia Trail specifically because it's a safe, welcoming environment where they can enjoy themselves without being concerned about traffic or undue usage. Well, it was actually one of the struggles I had with Fernonia Lake is that they were having problems finding it. The sign is beautiful but tiny. It feels outside of town and that was difficult for a small startup. But I think with the inclusion of the park and everything, that, that will definitely change. But I wanted to say, great, not only is my business model apparently working, I'm bringing in tourist money for you guys as well. So thank you again for your combination. I do apologize for taking up longer time again.
Okay, Jeff.
From here on out, it should just be legal.
And, and I would like to, your comment about tourist dollars, I think that this location really lends itself to that incorporation into them also seeing, oh wait, there is more town.
Yeah, there's a lot more to Fernonia than first timers realize. I'm still discovering things, but that's a long conversation for another time. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any business from the departments? Any ordinances or resolution? Any correspondence? Moving right into the city administrative report.
Okay, so I don't, do you guys want me to go through it? I don't know when I print it for you, if you, like, if it's redundant, I don't know. So we're almost done with electrical. Blake should be back there tomorrow to finish. We finally got the pump, the water pump from the creek, that electrical tied in because that was kind of the one-off shoot that wasn't part of the main core of it. So hopefully that should be done and then I'll be talking with Rob since Dean's on kind of 45, he's off for 45 days to deal with family stuff. I'll be talking to Rob about connecting with Banks-Fernonia to see if that is something, or sorry, Banks Fire, to see, Banks for, it just rolls off the tongue, to see if that is something they have the capacity to do. If those agencies don't say it, then we'll go out for bid to the three and figure out what, where we're going to find the money potentially. It's, I don't know. Angie's like, maybe it's ARPA because that's like the last set of money we have that doesn't have strings tied and it would totally, pretty much deplete a lot of the park's reserve, which we don't want to do for the demo.
Is there any possibility that Oregon Emergency Management, and I know we've lost Dennis and Christine and they're all gone, but is there any possibility they might entertain paying for the demolition?
Under what? I don't know.
Flood plane.
Yep. So the only trick about using that card is then if we wanted to put something back there, if we wanted to do even a flood okay structure, they may balk at that because their money went into taking, not getting it clear. So that's the only thing I'm thinking right off the top of my head about the, having too many strings, but.
No, you're right. Darn it.
Yeah. And, you know, the flip side is once, if the fire can't do it, we still have to get the scaffolding out from there. It may collapse on its own and then maybe it's not such the same kind of monstrosity that they're all seeing it as, right? That whole section may come down. And I did talk to the two firms that I discussed the demo with about, we are not going to pay for dumpsters. We have a franchise agreement. We will be bringing you dumpsters to put, if the roofing needs to get peeled off separately from the wood or something, we did have the roofing tested, so it's not the wrong kind of roofing to be disposed of. So there are some ways to kind of make it as cheap as possible in the demo, but should we have to go to like the grinding or whatever? That was what Alex and I talked about, was sending the tests over to him from Alpha Environmental to prove to him, he doesn't have to do like a three-step removal of that roof and all that. So we'll just kind of see where we land after we get the electrical moved.
Are the skate park lights back on?
Yeah. They all got re-energized, but they just were off because Westo had taken it down at the highway, the whole park, that section was off for the electrical till they got it reconnected. Still, I emailed the DEQ guys again saying, hey, any chance you have any information on the orphan site option? And they have not responded yet. Lake docks, I've discussed this with you guys a lot. We're just going to be installing the grading and getting some sort of temporary flotation in there to avoid the tipping and then go for, with council's approval, I'll have to bring that to you guys, for restoration enhancement grant for angler access through ODFW in July is when that opens up. The draft version of the CBA came to you. We're starting the restoration of the bathroom project this month. The estimator was out to get a bid. I've not talked with Mitch, I don't believe we've gotten the bid back yet, but it's a way smaller footprint, so we're not thinking that it's going to be too astronomical for them to do that coating. And then we did find that the roof is a slide and snap, not a drilled down metal roof. So you take the peak off and you take one section off and then you can slide the panels. And so we believe that's how Mitch believes he can get all the punky plywood replaced, all the facade boards that come down replaced and then the right flashing put on it and then slide the roof back down, re-affix it. We never had a mason that would come give us a bid for that interior wall, so we're going to go with concrete board in lieu of tearing out that middle section that's wicking water. We're just going to use like bathroom water board that doesn't wick anything. And with the flooring, they'll have cove, that's all one continuous thing, so the water, should water get in the corners, it won't have a place to wick back behind. He did put in the new toilet after the vandalism. All the fixtures are still in good condition. The one thing we are looking at potentially replacing are the partitions in this update because after 20 years, I'm like, we can't magic eraser them? And he's like, there's sections of those partitions that are just bad. So I do have a call in to the same person that did the bathroom partitions for the Rose Avenue building. Really simple, it's basically one partition with the door, it's not multiple units, so I think that should still fit within the budget. Then we did talk, he got all the paint and we are going to be power washing the whole structure and power washing that rough cedar and staining it and sealing it so that the rough that's catching all the cobwebs and spider webs will not catch as bad because Suzie has a heck of a time trying to brush those off there. They just kind of get further ingrained into that. So hopefully we'll solve that issue as well. So that's starting this month. He's already doing a lot of it and got a lot of the materials. Just so you know, the electric, electrician's working on the sign, JR's pet peeve, the entrance sign with no light. When they did the new line, they cut it, it was just a hot wire to that light. It was, there was no panel. So we are paying to have the right panel put in so that it's not dangerous like it was in the olden days. And then the electrical for vendor is Jeff and we're still working that out whether or not we want to do the box switch out or add it at a outlet. The lighting at the picnic shelter at Spencer, we're proposing to put one kind of light likes in the play shed area, 20,000, you know, Kelvin, whatever, LED, what?
Lumen.
Lumen, that's what it is, not Kelvin. Right? And then Blake's working on the post and the electrical plan for putting the outlets up for the cameras from Gorgnette and Spencer. The SCA grant, so we're waiting on the final design exemption paperwork to be signed and Angie's got a reimbursement request into SCA, but until they finalize those design exemptions, they will, then they'll reimburse us after that. The Storm Ready City, so I had the meeting with the representatives from the Storm Ready City. They're from National Weather Service and we're, we meet all the criteria we thought we would potentially with the emergency operations plan, the continuity of operations plan, all of the flood stuff we send out, the reader board, the notices and the water bill when it's winter time, all the things. They did ask us to become weather, part of the weather ready nation. You become an ambassador for weather ready nation, so I applied for that. That's part of the thing you have to do. And then they wanted to offer for us some storm spotter training. Are you a storm spotter?
I, probably technically not anymore, I need to.
Okay, because she said I have a, she said she has a few out here.
I mean, I always use my number, but.
Yeah. And so they have some training that we'll be putting kind of announcements on the website. If you're interested, it's kind of webinar based and different members of the community could be storm spotters and kind of help National Weather Service by going through this training and then they can push back information to the National Weather Service for our, specific for our area. So once they get all the final approvals, it goes to a commission and then that commission commissions the sign being made. They do like to have like a ceremony and a reveal. So at some point we'll, we'll do a Storm Ready City reveal and probably I'll bring council like three options of placement for the sign and then you guys can tell me where you want the sign placed. They like it somewhere kind of public, but I, right off the top of my head, don't have an idea where we'd put it unless it went with, unless it went with the high watermark and we just.
Right on top of that. Extend it to the pole.
Right? So that's, I don't know more than that on, on the reveal or where we're going to put it. She said there's some time in between. Do you guys have any other questions?
Got one, Mr. Smith.
Yeah.
So I've always kind of wondered, so on this SCA grant money, so we, we put in for the, you know, whatever, the $100,000 grant, but that's a reimbursement grant.
Mm-hmm.
And so where do we draw our money to pay the, our contractors? I mean, she must pull that from somewhere.
That's a finance question. I wish you'd asked me earlier. I can get you to answer, I don't know.
I mean, it's like, I was like, okay, the money is really not there till we get reimbursed.
Yeah.
It's coming out of somewhere else.
I can, I can ask.
Yeah.
I mean, I know all the funds are in the pool account, so I don't know that it's actually pulled from a specific, it's pulled from the greater pool.
Yeah.
Right? Because in the pool account, they're not divvied up like they are in our budget.
Yeah.
It's just one lump thing of money, but I can definitely ask that.
I guess, you know, when you're out 100 grand and then we don't get, we don't get our interest on 100 grand, but.
Right, right.
And it's splitting hairs, but I was always curious about that.
I'm right in town, so.
Oh, and on the R and E grant, would it be beneficial, when those docks went in, that was a big part of the Lions project, if I remember right.
Which grant?
The, when we put in the lake docks.
I think the Lions were a partner, like a community partner.
Was just wondering if that would help our application any if the Lions were to be, I don't.
Oh yeah, I think letter of support, hey, we were the partner, we're, we're willing to partner, you know, in some way. I think it's any, any community involvement bolsters your application for sure.
Okay.
And potentially, when we got the bid from Topper Industries about replacing the docks, they proposed timber, heavy timber construction when they gave us the $107,000 bid. We're going to propose that the R and E grant goes with metal construction, like aluminum, and then has the contained flotation, because I don't know why we'd spend another $107,000 only to have it last 20 years and start getting punky again being wood. And ODFW does not like pressure treated, which is what ours is made of. They don't like that above water. They don't want any of that in the system. So I think we have a pretty good shot of getting some estimates of what the metal structure underneath would be and then doing it that way. So that's what we're going to do should council, at the time when I bring you the, ask to apply, approve it.
I remember, I can't quite remember what the Lions club, we, I know we worked with Bob.
Oh, I think you guys.
DFW.
I think, yeah.
We did some, did some of our funding go for the.
Some of the funding, I know Isaac Walton Link was asking, he didn't have much, but he gave a loan.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it might have a, I have not delved into it because it isn't coming in July and I'm trying to pay attention to current stuff, but it might have a match and that could have been where those organizations kicked in to match and then wrote letters of support and then that's how you do it. So I'll be looking into it more as we get closer, but. Oh, one more little update, the seismic monitoring that's happening out of airport and they're decommissioning the old site and they're going to move it by the new site, that should be starting April into May. And we're going to let them keep it through the end of May, running simultaneously before they decommission the old one and start running off the new one for their continuity of their information and their data sets. So just if you, if someone says, there are people digging at the airport, that's what they're doing out there.
Any other questions for the CA? Thank you, Josette.
Yep.
Items from the mayor and counselors. I only have one item, just remind the council to do your SEI filing. I've got a couple more weeks to go on it, April 15th is due, but I took care of mine the past week, so just reminding everyone.
Yes, thank you.
Any counselors have anything?
I have something.
Okay.
Not exactly city related, but kind of business. We are all counselors and we know people, you know, talking about the higher district. There's a new grant that has been awarded to Tillman County, but it is serving all three counties. Anybody who is low or medium income, actually it can go up to 120% of area median income who has septic issues that needs repair or replacement, as long as they are not in city limits, because I don't think there's anybody in city limits anymore who has those. It'll be either a loan or grant program depending on the size of the project and their capacity to have a grant, have a loan against their property, their 30 years, 0%, no payment loans. Can't say that enough times.
Yeah.
I had somebody say, I don't understand what that means. And this was a, like a official, and I said, well, 0%. So there's no, no interest on it, there's no payment to do and it's a 30-year term and we can renew it if they're still in the house in 30 years. It's just, it's as a lien against the property, but it's a really great opportunity for, if you know of anybody who is having issues with their septic, have them get in touch with me. You're not one of the counselors.
Would you like to go out to the newspaper?
Yeah. When we, when we, when we get a little, when we get a little bit further.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're in contracting right now, but it has been awarded a million and a half dollars for the three counties. It's pretty cool and I'm so excited. And if you know anybody who needs a job. And if you know anybody who needs a job, who is good at construction or paperwork or things like that, please have them contact me because we've got several job openings that we need filled. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. Anybody have anything else? Dale?
Oh, been walking through the new trees pretty regular down there. Unfortunately, we had that little bit of vandalism, but it could have been a lot worse. So we'll see where that goes.
It's not even fun. I want.
Talked to the sergeant, I kind of got an idea, but. Maybe on his rounds, he might happen to go, oh, hey, look at these, when he finds them. But anyhow, so far, so good. We, I need to talk to Bill Hanson a little. I don't know if it's usual or not. I think it might have been the snow where it sat around the trees. A lot of them kind of have, like, they got burnt.
Oh, like a little frog.
Tight down. They were out of snow. I mean, there's a few that have some brown needles. But I was looking at some other navy ones, and that's not unusual, but that brown ring on some of them, so we'll see. But so far, they're looking pretty good. Some we planted in the back, back there. Well, the wetland got a little wetter than, and so. Probably are not going to make it there.
Or they become like a cypress and just grow in the water.
Yeah, I know. That's what we needed, some cypress. But I went back with the big weed whacker there and got some more, some of the Scotch broom. And I've got everything pretty well flagged, so I can find it if it brushes up. So, yeah, I can see my ribbons. It walks his dog. I'm entertaining the idea. Had a parent approach me online of our forestry class, really need some hands-on outdoor activities. And I know the next couple of years, we'll be doing more tree planting. We're probably going to want to be some, doing some brushing and clearing around some trees. I think it could work into, you know, maybe, maybe the city's forest lands. So I just, I haven't talked to the instructor yet, but I'm just kind of bouncing around in my empty skull up here, and I don't know if the council's got any ideas or staff. But yeah, maybe a collaborative between the school forestry class and city resources, we can give them some hands-on area.
What about the watershed?
Yeah, and Maggie could be involved and, you know, so. Anyhow.
Yeah.
Anybody else has got some ideas on it? I mean, I know I ran into Tim down there the other day on my rounds, and I mentioned it to him. It brought back big memories for him. Actually, they had it, that was after I was out of school, and it was actually Ralph Keasy was their instructor. And they did some surveying, they did this pacing, and you had to figure out what your pace was, the distance. And then you had a description by pace, and you had to go put in corner markers with compass and all, and they said, there was actually, I don't know if it was FFA sanctioned events where you wouldn't did that and.
Oh.
Yeah, so anyhow, it opens up, I mean, the forestry field has a lot of aspects to it.
Yes.
And so anyhow, I was just brainstorming of, because I'm all filled out to be a volunteer up at the school, and I was pushing with the welding instructor, but he isn't quite set up yet. So maybe I'll help the forestry class for a while. We'll see.
That'd be good.
But anybody has any other ideas around that, let me know. It's just like Tim, I mean, it was another whole thing. I was like, you know, never thought about that. They could go down here. What they do on those classes, they go have a surveyor actually put in corners, like they're, you know, the metal bar or whatever. And so they, they know where it's at. They come after it, and then the classes go and put their stakes. And then they come in and find it and go, okay, B, you're the closest, and, you know. What's that? Oh.
Looks like an ambulance.
Like a wounded dog.
Trap door, I'm telling you.
Huh?
Trap door's the answer.
Trap door.
It's not like the Model A, but it's parked.
Yeah.
Where it was when I left. Okay, anything else?
Thanks, Dale.
Yep.
Okay, action item summary.
Okay, so staff's going to put the line item in the budget for the funds for implementing ordinance 914 in the parks. Section of the budget. Staff's going to look into, in bringing back the recommendation from the Parks Committee, we're going to look into the pay station credit card fees, how many annual passes we're selling, and then bring that back to you guys to further discuss kind of where all the money is coming in from that. And we tabled that to the next meeting. And then talk to Angie about where the funds, if it's what I think with the pool account, or if it's specific for the SCA prior to reimbursement, for those are where we're drawing from. And then, of course, I'm going to sign an agreement, sign the CBA today and put that down as action items.
All right. Had a lot of work tonight. Did pretty well, I think. Thank you all for being here and participating. I'll adjourn the meeting at 9:30 PM. Meeting adjourned.